All right, let the minutes reflect that we reconvened at 8:47. I gotta have this watch fixed, that was the longest five minutes, right? Sorry about that. Okay, we're gonna move forward. Are there any more public comments? Okay, let me take this gentleman here before his arm wears off.
You?
Yeah, come on up.
You need to run it?
Absolutely.
Jack Sullivan, I'm general manager of the La Quinta Inn on Highland Road in Macedonia.
I'm Chintak Shah, one of the owners of the Country Inn and Suites in Macedonia.
And of course, we're here to talk about the proposed ordinance 794. And I think we have some issues as hotel operators within the community. I've been in my property for 15 years. The building is about 15 years old. If you're familiar with this proposed ordinance, there seems to be some community concern about prostitution, meth labs, things of that nature. I've been there 15 years, as long as the building. I don't recall having that problem. I don't think the police will recall having that problem at my property. And I doubt that he has. So what's on the proposal is disturbing to me because of the proposed requirement for 84 hours a week of hired security, which is going to be quite expensive. He's got some numbers he checked around. Stopping, getting photo ID from our customers is one thing. We want that. The Ohio Hotel and Motel Association wants that. And it's just good business to want that, to know who you're dealing with. Not only to get your bill paid, but in the event of an emergency, we'd like to know who's in our rooms, so that we can contact somebody. So, there's all these good business reasons for wanting that. But to stop an individual coming to visit a guest at the hotel, stop them, make them produce photo ID, further have them provide their telephone number, because that won't be on the photo ID, stop what we're doing, which is trying to run a business, record the time that this person came in, what room they were going to visit, and the time that they leave, when we have three other exits anyway, so we couldn't control that. It seems to encroach on profiling, perhaps even invasion of the Privacy Act kinda might fall into place here. So I'm a little worried about that. So if the community were able to get this to succeed, adding this burden on us, we have the expense, we have very, very likely litigation possibilities down the road, and I think to minimize what may be a minor problem, rather than a major problem, is gonna create even bigger problems. Even from a life safety aspect, from the people that I have employed at the front desk of the hotel, that has to stop you, you, and you from coming in here to visit your relatives staying in one of my rooms. We pay a good amount of property tax, and I think part of the property taxes includes fire, safety, police, protection, et cetera, just like you get at your home. Now, the issues brought forth are police matters. I didn't care to get into law enforcement, so I chose the hotel business. I value my life. I highly value the lives of my employees. I do not care to be put at additional risk. I wanna let him talk a little bit, because I could go on forever.
Very well said, though. Go ahead.
Just to add a couple of good points to Jack's, we're talking about a $70,000 expense annually to hire a security person just to work 12 hours a day. And the security person that is not TSA, who can't check guests' bags or baggage to see what they're bringing into the rooms, the security person cannot, that is not allowed to go enter any guest rooms legally, and a security guard that if he sat in the lobby would be absolutely no good to the properties that are exterior corridor, which are not here tonight, but they're the ones who, having a guard in the lobby would really do no good to them, because all of their guests can just pull up to the door and go right into it and do what they wanna do. I think that part of this is very extreme, in my opinion, and I ask the council and whoever can abolish at least this part of this, of the ordinance, to do so. Asking visitors, I agree with Jack, you cannot ask somebody, there's three different people, three to four different people that work the desk every single day. If I check in somebody in the morning, that doesn't necessarily mean that he's gonna know who that person is, and if he's asking a business customer, "Hey, I need to see your ID every time you walk in," it's a big inconvenience, and I guarantee you they're not gonna come back to our hotel. Because if I was the person in that, in that person's shoes, I wouldn't go back, because I would feel like, hey, why am I being the one asked for ID every single time, even though it was the same day? As far as some of the other stuff I do agree with that is on here, that, you know what, if you are one of the properties, which is not, I believe either one of us, but if you are one of the properties that's getting multiple calls, you know, on a 30-day period, and I agree, something should be done about that, because that's just creating a bad name for the community.
We had scheduled a meeting to bring all you guys in to kinda talk about this. I was actually the one who introduced this. I had the legal department draw something up. We knew that what we have now would be tweaked, changed, whatever we need to do. That's why we wanted to bring you guys in. We are still gonna do that. We are gonna work on it. We wanna work with you. We wanna see you be successful. You know there's a recino coming in, could only benefit you guys. We wanna see that. But when we have meth labs, when we have prostitution, and the same person getting arrested for prostitution at the same place, that's when the eyebrows raise. That's not gonna happen in this community. I don't know that it was your hotel. I don't think it was. It's irrelevant at this point. But that's the kinda stuff we're trying to put a stop to. So understand that we're not trying to put a burden on you guys. We're trying to put a stop to things that continue to happen at the same place with the same people. So we understand completely, we're not trying to incur costs on you, but we wanna have that meeting so we could sit down and collectively decide what's best for our community, what's best for your business, and what's gonna have success for all of us.
You know, these problems are not unique to Macedonia. They happen, I work in the law enforcement myself, as they happen. A lot of hotels have those same issues, and there's other cities that have dealt with it. The email I think you sent, you sent out, sir, very good points, and none of us up here want any undue burden, and there's a whole lot of tweaking before we vote on it. We probably wanna even vote on this for another couple of meetings, but I don't know what happened, there was some sort of miscommunication or something, but we, you know, we'll definitely have you in, and there's a lot, there's a lot of adjustments to be made before this gets any type of action.
We're gonna schedule another meeting, probably on a Thursday. I'm gonna work with our council clerk and the mayor and the legal department, so that we can all sit down again collectively and come up with some type of plan to address these problems. Again, I'm not gonna specifically say what hotel or who or anything like that, but if we can work together to come to a conclusion, that's what we essentially want. We don't wanna put a burden on you. We wanna put a stop to the things that continue to happen.
Well, we appreciate that, and we wanna put a stop to it as well. We don't want it in the community any more than anybody in this room does. It's bad for business. We do business with a good clientele. We don't know who we're getting at all times, but that's the nature of the business. But we do use due diligence in how we operate, and I would suspect, I'm guessing, but I don't think the problem is quite as extreme as some residents might think it is. I think it's occasional. If it is, in fact, same place, same issue, over and over, the issue should be addressed to that particular location, not the industry in general. It's like trying to punish the masses for the activities of few. And I think that probably most people in this room have never stepped foot inside his property or mine to know what kind of an operation we have. I do know that at least one person in this room has. But with these things, I would think that a little more research into the operating habits, the actual facility, come toward the place. We'd be more than welcome to have you in there anytime.
How many rooms do you have?
The department knows, they're more than welcome, always have been. Come in as often as you care to. We don't wanna scare off the client, but come and walk the halls, we don't care.
How many rooms do you have at your hotel?
I have 54, and I believe you have 80.
I have 86.
And you're the closest hotels to this proposed recino?
Probably.
Have anybody from that recino or that Northfield Village come and talk to you about what might happen down the road a year from now?
No. The only thing...
Do you know of any plan?
We don't know of any plans except probably hearsay or proposed things, and there will be their own hotel up there eventually. But people like us probably feel it's good for business, because we suspect that it'll be a very high-priced hotel, and we're moderately priced. We're not low-priced, but we're moderately priced, and I think they'll do the gambling up there, and they'll come lodge with us.
Okay. It's been great meeting you two. How nice it is to know we have people like you running businesses in our community. That was all very well said. I have a high degree of respect for you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Yes, sir?
I will try to make this quick. Here's an item on the agenda tonight, it's ordinance number 71-212, amending the codified ordinances to prohibit electric signs. I would hope that council would schedule a work session with the planning commission to discuss this. My experience has been you don't, really don't want to prohibit items. That gets you in trouble. You want to control them. And with the modifications we made to the sign ordinances last year, that was our attempt so that we do not get these large, overbearing electronic signs within the city. If they're properly controlled, they do not bring the aesthetics of the city down, they actually improve it. And that's what you have to do, is you have to find the happy medium. So I would just hope that you would, if you're gonna have a work session, I would hope you invite the planning commission to it.
Thank you. Any more comments this evening? Yes?
I think it's a good idea.
There is an ordinance tonight to prohibit charitable donation boxes in the city, and since I know we do have a number of them now, I'm just wondering if we, if we change our ordinances perhaps to not prohibit them, because they are donations for organizations that are helping people, and we do have a lot of people who do donate to those boxes. If we could make a requirement that in order to place a box, they have to maintain the box to look well, very well, well-painted, well-marked, and so forth, and if we could allow them to basically operate unless they're sighted, and if they're sighted, then they have to pull the box. That would be something I think that we could consider, because I think they are helping people. We've got a lot of charities that are receiving donations from this, and I hate to see us throw the baby out with the bathwater. So that's a concern that I have. I had really one question, too. I know that we've got a lot of recycling boxes now. Is that included under this or not?
I'm sorry.
Would we prohibit the recycling boxes that are everywhere?
No. Tom said no.
No, they're not, that's not included. So it's just the charitable ones. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Yes, sir? Yep, you.
Short and sweet.
Okay.
Mr. Morris is correct, as far as the electric sign prohibition. The, my name is Bill Mock, I live at 8609 Larkspur Lane. The, I've been here 18 years only. That seems, I've watched the city go from the 19th century to the 20th century. I'm hopefully helping it get into the 21st century by being a member of the planning commission, and it looks to me as this prohibit all electric signs kinda puts us back in the 17th century, and I really hope that doesn't happen.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, ma'am?
Tina Hanna, Macedonia, I would just like to ask you all, before you decide anything on Mr. Martin's motion about the resolution for the containers, I agree with what Sylvia Hanekin said about the condition, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't hurt the people that need those donations, because you don't want them in town. Coming in the fall, kids depend on those to get their winter coats for school, shoes, clothing, the elderly. I just think it's a bad idea to make poor people suffer any more than they have to, just because, you know, we don't wanna have collection boxes in town, when the real issue is the condition of the boxes. Thank you.
Any other public comments relative to the boxes? Tina, this was laying in front of us, I'd like to show it to you and Sylvia. It shows pictures of mattresses and stuff. I think Mr. Martin's kinda upset with that part of it.
I understand, and I agree with that. I think we should enforce, you know, this has to go in the box, otherwise, and they have to, the charity has to maintain that.
All right, moving on. No more public comments. We're gonna start with pending our new legislation, and we'll start this evening with ordinance number 68-2012.
I'd like to offer ordinance 68-2012 for its second reading by title only.
An ordinance amending the Business Regulation Code by adding new chapter 794 entitled Hotel and Motel Security and Safety.
Moving on to ordinance number 69-2012.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 69-2012 for its second and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
An ordinance amending chapter 1171 of the Codified Ordances of the City of Macedonia prohibiting the placement of donation boxes in the city of Macedonia.
Let me offer a comment at this point. First of all, these donation boxes have been a major headache and a major eyesore in the city of Akron. People talk about, well, we can regulate them. The fact of the matter is, is that we can't regulate them, because half the time, we can't even get in touch with the organizations who provide them. Secondly, we don't even know what organizations are out there providing these boxes, or whether they're charitable or not. Thirdly, as the mayor showed, this is what happens. People start dumping garbage outside of them, and they had a major problem in the city of Akron with the fact that some organization put out a bunch of donation boxes. The company dissolved, and the city of Akron had to collect all of these donation boxes at taxpayers' expense and dispose of them, as well as many of them created a health hazard, because kids were putting garbage in them, kids were putting other items in them that they felt were unsafe. There was even, somebody even brought up the fact that Homeland Security was concerned about them because of what might be put, put in them. The thing about it is, is that if you go to Northfield, for instance, Goodwill has a trailer out there that's opened up and available during the daylight hours, and you can make a contribution at any time to Goodwill. And if we wanna allow these boxes to proliferate in this city, and they have been multiplying, and Mr. Lad, I think you would agree with me, that they've been a real nuisance because of situations like this, where people have just felt that I can pile garbage around these, then maybe perhaps we shouldn't pass this ordinance, and we should just tell our residents, yeah, anybody can come in, drop a box off at a parking lot in the Macedonia Commons, because even the people who are leasing the property there, like a Home Depot, Lowe's, or what have you, they don't even have any control over this. They just show up. And people who say, well, these organizations are charitable organizations, how do you know? I've never heard of a lot of these organizations, and I don't know how they spend their money, but I do know this. I do know that they are an eyesore in our city, and this is a city where you have a beautiful recreational area, a beautiful park. You know, we've tried to make this city very, very green, and we discuss it all the time, and we've worked very, very hard by having Western Reserve architecture and brick. So if people wanna have these boxes here, and if they wanna have garbage piled around them, and watch them rust, and then not know who's responsible for them, that's fine, because you're gonna end up with five, six, seven, eight boxes like this in one parking area, or in one shopping center, and if that's the kinda city we want, that's fine. But I will point out to you that Goodwill, I talked to them about this beforehand, and they pointed out to me that the major reason they didn't put up boxes is because, A, they couldn't maintain them, B, because a lot of times they were vandalized, and people put garbage in them, and it destroyed the things that were being contributed, and that's why when you go to Goodwill in Northfield, and you contribute things, you have a designated individual there to examine the items, and he either accepts them or rejects them. So I, this, this whole rather illogic emotional argument about we're harming the poor, I think is just, it's a real stretch here, because what we're doing is, if we allow these to remain in the city, we're gonna harm our community. So I would just like to call a vote on this.
Is it my turn now? He said no, so is it my turn?
He moved to adopt it.
We called the question.
We already got, well...
All right.
We had enough to suspend the rules. Five voted to suspend the rules. Mr. Barker voted not to suspend the rules, but I had enough votes to read it as Mr. Martin said. So now it's to the point where Mr. Martin is, is moving to adopt it, so?
Yeah, if anybody else has any comments, I think you should.
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were saying that, I didn't have enough to go.
I have to agree with Mr. Martin, that there's a place called the Goodwill, and they're set up there to go and inspect a lot of things. This summer, a friend of mine dropped their child off at college, and the room was completely infested with bedbugs and lice and stuff like that, and they had to leave all their belongings right there in the room of the college. And to me, I, I think it's an eyesore myself, and I think that there's places set up that need to look at that stuff, because here's this family who had taken their child's stuff into the college and had to leave it there. You never know what you're gonna get until you get there, and I have to agree with Mr. Martin.
Roll call.
I need a second, so I take your second.
Sure.
Oh, sure. Add to the confusion.
You want me to say, I moved that we pass and post?
Well, I kinda figured that when you said you offered it. I just needed a second.
Offering it.
All right, now it's a roll call. Mr. Barker?
You know, Mr. Martin is 100% right. Something needs to be done. I just don't like the fact that we're, it seems like, it's like all or nothing, kinda like with the, with the electronic signs. I just wanna see a little more, you know, do we contact these, these companies and say, hey, you need to have some type of permit, or even maybe the business owner that, you know, somebody owns that parking lot? I just think we're going too far. There's gotta be some happy medium, so I would say no at this point in time, unless we do some amendments to it.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
I'd just point out that there are organizations, especially veterans organizations, that actually call your house on occasion and come out and pick it up. And my, they call about, I don't know, every two months, and my wife usually has something. So I am sympathetic to the poor, but I also understand that this is a ongoing problem, and so I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moller?
Quick history on this. We did try to contact these folks, the problems like we've seen here with the mattresses. I also like to point out that Purple Heart sends out postcards to your home, saying a date that they can be there. I religiously put out bags for the Purple Heart and other organizations that come to your home, so you don't have to drive anywhere to do it. So this is no shot to the poor. I already donate, but these boxes, I do believe are nuisance as well, so my vote is yes.
Thank you very much, council, because you have recognized a problem in our community, and you have remedied it, and you have rejected the rather hysterical argument that somehow by passing this, that we're hurting the poor, because we have Purple Heart, we have veterans, and we have Goodwill. Thank you.
Moving forward, resolution number 70-2012.
I would like to offer resolution number 70-2012 for its second reading by title only.
A resolution freezing all family recreation center fees and dues for all Macedonia residents.
Shane, would you like to explain to the people what's happening?
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you, mayor. We're gonna have a, and it's actually not on the calendar, but next Wednesday, on the 19th, we're gonna have a Parks and Rec Commission, and Mr. Martin has graciously volunteered, or I think I kinda talked him into it, he's gonna come and present some of these issues to us that he has, along with the dues and some other issues that you wanna bring up to the rec center, and that will be 7 o'clock next Wednesday at the rec center. Am I right, Angela, on that?
Yes, except I believe the date is the 15th?
The 15th is Saturday.
Oh.
No, not Saturday.
It's the 19th.
19.
You were right then, I stand corrected.
So that's, that's when, we'll present that to the commission, I get the recommendations.
What time is that meeting, Angela?
7:00 PM.
19, 7.
Pardon?
7:00 PM.
Okay, I'll buy pizzas for everyone.
You made that in open, so good.
Great, I'll come.
Yeah.
I'll come for the pizza.
Well, I'm gonna put, what are those little fish you put on?
Anchovies.
Yeah, anchovies.
Great, I love them.
Did you read this yet, Ms. Sarcisi?
Oh, yes, sir.
It was first, second reading, you read it?
I did about the dues, yes.
Okay, I kinda got lost.
With all the bantering, I know you forget.
Okay. All right, that's all right. Yes, moving on to ordinance number 71-2012.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 71-2012 for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance amending section 117905, the Codified Ordances of the City of Macedonia in order to prohibit all electric signs.
Moving, moving on to resolution number 72-2012.
I would like to make a motion that for resolution number 2070, resolution number 72-2012, did I get this right, that was it gonna be? I mean, offer, is it first, second, and third reading?
Oh, that's your, whatever your pleasure.
Would you guys decide in there on that?
First, second, and third.
Okay, that's all. For first, second, and third reading by title only. Sorry, I didn't catch that in the meeting in there, so I wasn't sure.
Our second or motion?
Thanks, Jane.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Go ahead.
A resolution extending support and cooperation to the mayor in order to develop the concept of using the old city hall as a senior community center for the city of Macedonia and for all Nordonia Hills communities.
What this resolution is, is just council saying, let's look into it, and that's all I'm asking of all the other communities. We would have to form a committee, some kind of input from all the communities would be asked, and what's your pleasure?
Well, I move that we pass and post resolution number 72-2012, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moller?
Yes.
Whether this'll actually come to be or not, Erlene, we hear ya. All right, moving on to motions or other legislative actions.
Yes, mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, effective in the 9/27/2012 meeting, to have a sign-up sheet for public comments, and begin to limit the comments to five minutes. If someone decides that they need to go past that, it would be decision of the mayor or council president to allow that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any other motions or legislative actions? Any correspondence from the clerk?
I have several, sir. This is by email. Hi, Dave, I was viewing the latest Macedonia Council meeting on television the other day, and there was some discussion on a plan of Longwood Park that required completion by year-end. Not sure if you, not sure if you participate on Parks and Rec Commission, but if you do, I hope you consider paving walking paths as a future possibility.
Attaches to the letter I sent to the mayor, and then, many cities have paved paths, and it really promotes good health for all ages, walkers, joggers, bikers, cross-country members, et cetera. And then, I know Twisburg has worked with Summit County Metro Parks on walking trails. Maybe this is a possibility for Macedonia. Thanks, Dennis Ruska, I imagine he says it that way, I'm hoping he does. Mr. Engel forwarded to me and asked me to read it. A couple thank you notes for people relative to the paramedics, Rick Kalish, Dave Morris, Jeff Tilkie, and Chris Longo, from the Tilkie family, ash, relative to the care that was provided, as the little card says, saving my mom. So, I think the other stuff I, everybody received already. Oh, and just a real quick, this is, this is old, but, not old, we just didn't have time the last meeting. This is actually from Summit Acrode Soil Waste Management Authority to the mayor on behalf of the, the city's willingness, as they've done in the past, to participate in the recycling program, where residents of, of Summit County, Macedonia is used as a drop-off point, as are other communities. And this year, at the event that was held in Macedonia on July 14th, 10, over 10 tons of unwanted documents and 600 pounds of cardboard was picked, picked up here. And they just wanted to thank the city for, from Yolanda Walker, the executive director, for the city's willingness to always to participate and be a good focal point for the community. That's it.
That's it? Okay. Next is the mayor's report. I would like to apologize for my actions earlier. I'm sorry. I just, I guess, have a little bit of pride and sometimes express it in the wrong way. My mayor's report tonight could be lengthy, and it won't be, because this is a long meeting. If you get a chance, try and go look at our new bridge. Every day is starting to look more and more like a bridge. That's a good thing. It will be done on schedule in the fall of 2013. As of now, the businesses on Highland witness every day how hard we are working to minimize the impact on their business. I'm very happy to say that we have had no complaints lately from the businesses there. And all the effort put into signage and notification seems to be doing the job. But, that does not mean they're up to par business-wise. Remember, they still desperately need us to frequent the retail businesses there. Please patronize them. The businesses see that effort being made to get the bridge done on schedule. I would like to extend our gratitude to Kenmore Construction for their hard work ethic. They're doing a great job, and are really, really doing it fast. The drought did help, by the way. As far as, I gave a state of the city address earlier today at the meeting of the Chamber of Commerce, and I, it will be posted on our website, so I urge you to take a look at it. But I'm just going to read you one paragraph out of it, which I think very much says it all. In my speech, I said I'm talking about a government that gives taxpayers the best bang for their buck. Macedonia has weathered the storm and is on the move. We will continue to serve our residents with the most qualified professional staff that cares about delivering the best service to our residents. And I want to thank my staff. On a lighter note, Halloween will be celebrated in the city of Macedonia on Wednesday, October 31st, from 6 to 8. Take a look, go to www.cityamassadoniaoh.us, dot oh, dot us, and visit our new official Please keep my daughter in your prayers. She will be undergoing a serious operation involving her upper spine. And that's the end of my report. Do we have any committee reports tonight?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the planning commission, we have a meeting scheduled, I believe. It is for Monday, September 24th. The last meeting was actually canceled. But beyond that, I just want to point out that, Angela, I tried out your new exercise equipment, and it's not as nice as you are, nor is it as forgiving. It is a very difficult piece of machinery to work.
It is definitely challenging, yes.
The safety committee, I, I've been trying to convene a meeting for a couple months now. I think that Nick and Mike run it with me. If we could have that either at 6 o'clock before next council meeting, or at 6:30, I really, the, the two chiefs have been needing this for quite some time.
6:30. 6:30.
6:30, would that work with you chiefs? Before next, next, before next council meeting, 6:30 for a safety committee meeting?
Do you guys need more than a half hour, because we could schedule another day if you want?
No, half an hour should. No, let's get, get a commitment from us now, so we can, we can do it. Next, next meeting, what's?
The 27th.
27th.
27th of September. Thank you.
Are there any other committee reports? Hearing non-departmental reports. Jim?
Yes, in the month of August, service crews, we rented a crack sale machine, and the crews applied some 14,000 pounds of material on 87,000 millimeter cracks. We did Shepherd Road north of 82 to the 480 Bridge, South Park Drive, South Freeway, North Freeway in Bobble Lake, and also the North Drive at the city center. We did that all in-house. We spent some $15,600 on material alone. In the past, these projects were bid out, and we spent $50,000 to $80,000 on some of those projects. Crews are currently getting ready to get another machine, and we're going to try to do what we can to make the rec center parking lot a little bit more user-friendly, try to get some of those low spots filled in so that it won't hold water, in hopes to convince council to possibly purchase that machine next year, so we could get out on the road with it. Also, due to the recent infestation of the Emerald Ash Borer, we have deemed it necessary to move 27 ash trees on tree lawns on Long Drive, Firestone, and the island at the post office on Spring Hill. We're in the process of resident notification and removal, and we'll be doing that in-house also. Other crews are roadside mowing, catch basin repairs, and roadside ditching. And that's all I have.
Mr. Kreevar, on the, on the tree lawns, are you, are you going to grind the stumps in and replace that with, replacing with something?
At this point, we, we're working on getting some prices for replacement trees. I don't believe we have, I'm not sure if Scott has anything in the budget right now for replacement, but right now we got to get them down. It would have to either be, most likely a fall planting, and it's unlikely we'll be able to get to that this year, so it'll probably be into next year.
Spring, okay.
Jim, on a note similar to quoting trees, I had a contractor come to my house to quote removing some dead trees. And his first thing out of his mouth was he complained about our department, our building department and service department, that he had quoted a job, and he even got told to have a PO for it. And then, he was told he couldn't have the job because there was some other project that he did in the city that he didn't get a permit for, and the job was awarded to someone else. Is that normally done? That we give a PO out for someone, and then we reneg it and pull it back or change it?
We don't know that I gave a PO. I might have, might advise them that we had one or were working on getting one. And then, like I said, when we were checked on registration, we found out that they were performing some work in the city without permits.
Was it at the same time as the quote?
I, I believe so, yes.
Okay, and then?
And then we had just checked with the law department, and we said, what should we do? You know, we didn't want to have a conflict with another department. They advised us to just go with the next lowest bid.
Because I noticed some of the quotes said, advise to register with the building department, that some people had, had quoted the job or various jobs that weren't not yet registered. And the, it said there to notify them that they should be registered. So, you're letting contracts out with people who are registered to work in the city?
Yes.
That's one of the requirements of them getting to work?
Very good. Yes, Mike?
Thank you. New homes starts this year 30. Homes under construction, we have 52 right now. Additions are eight, alterations 17. Dunkin' Donuts is coming along very good. We're looking at getting asphalt soon. Just finished up their brickwork. We're currently working on an expansion for the building department, and council's all aware of that. And it's going to take quite some time to get all records moved up and organized. Probably will send some pictures of that as it goes on, because due to some of the records requests that we've received, we had to do this renovation, and it's quite extensive. Discount Tire is starting work actually tonight. If you go down 82, there's going to be some lanes closed. They're going to be from, I believe, 10 o'clock at night till 6:00 in the morning. Nick will elaborate on that a little bit more in his report. As far as zoning, we have 223 point of sales done this year, and 270 zoning letters sent. That concludes my report.
Very good. Angela?
Good evening. I just wanted to provide an update on our annual facility closing. We close once a year for maintenance purposes, and that was the third week in August. A lot of the building maintenance that occurred occurs behind the scenes and is not all visible to the public. We did have all of our, our pumps for all of our pools serviced. We pulled those out, had those all serviced as preventative maintenance, and also improves efficiency. Those have not been done, some of them I don't believe have ever been serviced, to be honest. Our filter systems were all repaired and brought up to par to improve efficiency again. We installed a new thermostat system for our sauna. We actually had a leak in our whirlpool. We had a company come in, grind all of the concrete out, repair that, refill it, resurface it, put all new jet fittings in, new pneumatic switches. Our whirlpool is almost brand-new without having to rebuild the entire thing. The floors were all stripped and re-waxed. We, I'm trying to think of everything else we did. The men's locker room was refurbished, the lockers were repaired and repainted. And we also were able to purchase some new equipment this year, which I'm thankful for, for that. Our members are very thankful for that. Our elevator was resurfet, or resurfaced, serviced. The list goes on and on, but we, we accomplished a lot. We really, really performed a lot of maintenance, maintenance tasks that we cannot do when we're open to the public. So, we did, we did complete quite a few things that week. The only other thing I wanted to mention has to do with our farmer's market. We still have a month left to go this season. Unfortunately, our attendance has dwindled quite significantly. It is held in the rec center parking lot. We've done everything we can to help promote our vendors, and, and much to our dismay, the attendance just has not sustained itself. So we have been talking to the manager of the Home Depot, and starting this coming Tuesday, we will be relocating the farmer's market to the outer parking lot of Home Depot in the Commons. The time will be from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. It'll still be the remaining Tuesdays that we have. I think we have four weeks left. And the, the hope is that we will have more traffic that drives by that can, that can support the vendors. So if you are a visitor of the farmer's market, starting next week, it will be relocated to the Home Depot parking lot. Thank you.
That's awfully nice, though. They seem to be a very community-oriented business. That was very good.
Yeah, we've established a really, really nice working relationship with them, probably over the last summer, just this past summer, more than any other time, and we're very grateful for them.
I gotta believe you'll get more business there.
One of the things people don't realize, when we shut down our rec center for maintenance, in many communities, that means vacation and party time for the staff, not in this community. In this community, the staff gets right in there, pitches right in, works harder than anyone else, and I'm so proud of the job and you, Angela, that was accomplished. Thank you. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Along with the August financial report, just a quick commentary, is we're right now 18.5% increased revenue in income tax this year. So, year-to-date, we've collected actually, with the first installment of Rita Distribution in September, $5,865,966. That's significant, because that almost eclipses the same amounts that we collected for the total years in 2009 and 2010. 2010, we collected for the entire year, $5,849,859. So at this point, we're actually a few dollars over. I expect that into the fourth quarter of this year, we should surpass, which would probably be an all-time high for Macedonia, over $7.3 million. And again, actually, I'm projecting 7.4. But again, we, we did spend over $1.2 million, which Councilman Shane Barker pointed out at the earlier pre-council meeting, along with the Berkshire roads, and we did playground equipment and other expenditures. So even though we got to boost a quarter percent income tax, we're actually putting it back into infrastructure, snowplow trucks, more maintenance on the streets, police cars, et cetera. But I look for the challenge of when this income tax rolls off in 2013, will have a little residual effect for 2014, as taxpayers settle up their 2013 bills. But as council knows, we've got a plan ahead for 15 and 16. We still have the debt payment, the final two-years payment on the safety center. And I'm sure with some additional planning, and hopefully the growth in the economy continues, that we will be in a pretty good shape, I feel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Fire Prevention Week will be held this year, October 7th through the 13th, and the theme this year is no two ways out. That's all I have, Mayor.
John?
Hopefully, everybody saw one of the new mark cars out front. I think they're pretty sharp. I think some of the council people commented on that. The cars, the cars you guys approved in, I think, March, it's taken this long to get them on the road, and that's only one. We have another one still waiting to get on the road. So, we got two this year, we're grateful, and hopefully we'll get a few more next year.
Was it seven that you wanted?
Yeah. Nine.
Oh, nine.
All right. Tom?
Your report, thank you, Mayor.
Moving on, is there any?
Yes.
Hi, Nick. I'm sorry. Went right past you there.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to report on the 271 bridge painting by ODOT. It's a week ahead of schedule. Been notified by ODOT today that the, the left turn lane on the 271 northbound, they'll begin implementing that the last week of September instead of the first week of October. Bruce Road reconstruction will begin the first week of October. That work's scheduled for approximately three-week completion. Contractor at that point in time will also come in and do Bavaria Road, which was part of the original contract. And as Mike had mentioned, Discount Tire is starting tonight with their water connection on State Route 82. They're actually going to be closing down three lanes of pavement. Out of the five, they'll be restricting one lane of through-traffic east and westbound. While they're doing this work, they're not, they have not been given permission to work over the weekend, so they're going to start tonight, they're going to come back next week and finish it. They're anticipating this to be a three-day completion. It may end up taking four. We'll see what happens. Police will be out there tonight. Inspection by engineering department will be out there tonight, and we'll see how they do.
And you're having it done at night, so it has a minimum impact on the traffic, and it'll be plated during the day.
It'll be plated, correct.
Very good.
Work hours are 10, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, so.
Good. Thank you. Yeah, good job. Now we'll move on to unfinished business.
I, I have a question, because it came up earlier. I, I had the privilege of meeting Nick's Tree Service here. They're doing a big job with our neighbors next door. And I had spoke with Jim yesterday, is it yesterday I spoke with you? I had met them, actually at Mike's house. And when they came over to do this big, huge job in my neighbor's yard, I noticed that they do waterproofing, concrete- Concrete company, it's a big, huge company. They have, they do, Nick's Tree Service also has a brother who does concrete. And they do waterproofing. And I'm trying to get them to do the waterproofing at the manor house for free. And now, since there's a conflict because of this tree stuff, I have a question for you, Mr. Ladd. Is tree cutters registered separate from the concrete people? Is that all too separate? Is it just?
If it's, if it's the same company and they do multiple things? No, as long as they're registered, just registered once, as long as it's the same company. If it's a separate company, then they'd have to re-register.
Okay, because they, they got the bid, and they were the lowest quote for doing the trees in the park. And they didn't get the job because they were told that Mr. Ladd had told them that they couldn't have the job because of a conflict of interest with his brother who does concrete. So I was just wondering, if I turn them on to this gentleman over here, are they going to be able to do this waterproofing for free if, if everything works out fine? Because they weren't allowed to do the tree job. I'm just wondering how this works.
I guess my question is, is it the same company or is it separate companies, number one?
Well, it's Nick's Tree Service who does a lot of work here in Macedonia, and a lot of residents absolutely love them. And if you've seen the work that they're doing next door to my property, it's tremendous. And they plant grass really nice. You should see the grass work.
I don't have any issues with the quality of work that Nick's Tree Service does. And if you ask him that, we've done several inspections throughout the years.
We found out, we found out that they didn't get a job. They got an appeal from Mr. Krevar. And then Mr. Krevar was not allowed to award them the job because you had said no because of what his brother had done.
If it's the same company, I don't know if there's brothers involved or what have you.
I don't know how that works.
It's the same company as the same company.
They work under, sorry, they work under the same registration.
Okay, that's what I, thank you. Thanks, Kayla. So when they go, what will they have to do if I get them to do the waterproofing for free for the historical people? I don't know.
The question that arose is, they had, if I can recall, they had multiple jobs that they did not pull permits for. This happens with Nick's Tree Service year after year after year. This year, when they did not pay for the permits, and we usually catch them and we say, "Come on, get a permit before because now we've got to charge a double for the permit. We don't like to do this, but it's, it's the law." So we double-charge them. They come in, have to get a permit. This happens year after year after year. So we contacted the law department because we caught them again this year and said they didn't get permits for jobs again. And here we found out that they were going to be working for the city. That's when we contacted the law department and said, "What do you want to do? Do you want to hire them? Do you not want to hire them?" At this time, they thought it was not a good time since they still had outstanding permits that were not paid.
So we actually paid more to another person because we turned down the lowest bid? Or why didn't we just get them to pay their permit?
We do, year after year. We do, we do get them to pay year after year. But this year, they had some open permits that we caught them doing work without permits again. And it's a, it's a continual thing. And we talked to the prosecutor about this. We're going to bring them into court. And at that point, we were hiring them, the two worked for the city. So we contacted the law department and asked their advice.
Pardon me for asking this, but this is kind of an inappropriate conversation to be taking place. We're talking about a business that, you know, may have had a problem.
Well, earlier there was a business that had a problem.
This is where we stop. Because I, you know what? We can't keep carrying on talking about a personal business where they didn't pay a bill. I think it's totally inappropriate, and I think it needs to stop now.
Well, that is, he's telling that. I just had a question.
This is something that should not be taking place on the floor. This is something that should have been talked about in a telephone call, in an email. It's still public record, but we're not going to talk about a personal business not paying a bill. This is ridiculous. It stops now. Thank you.
Is there any new business?
Mr. Mayor? I had the pleasure of going to the Made in America store in West Aurora, New York, where everything they sell there is made in America, including this little sign here. And I took it upon myself to act on your behalf and invite them to come to Macedonia and build a store. They have only one. They have a big internet business. But it was amazing to go into, I saw American ketchup. I saw, I couldn't find Made in China anywhere. And I said, "This is the best city in America to put this, their second store." So that was a very exciting trip. And they had a lot of stuff I'd like to buy, but my council salary's so low, I couldn't do it. In West Aurora, New York, which is, of course, famous for the home of President Millet.
Thank you very much for the plug for our city.
Yes. They, they, they did not, they did not fall on idle ears.
Any other new business?
Mr. Mayor, this letter, this week, we received a letter from Judge Hoover at Stoneman Municipal Court regarding some of the financial issues with the new court building. He'd asked if maybe council would like to meet with him or the mayor, and I don't know if anybody's responded, but I'd like to see if it would be possible to set up a meeting with Judge Hoover to discuss these financial issues and the issue of whether or not it's financially more feasible for the city to discontinue mayor's court. I think it's something that we might want to review again in light of what the judge has brought to our attention. And certainly, it's a, I respect the judge, and I always like to hear his opinion. So if someone, if, if the majority of council would be interested in doing this with one of us, or if you want me to do it, I'd be happy to contact the judge.
Yeah, I'd love to have him. He came in here when they first opened up. I'd love to talk to him.
Do we want to do this as a special meeting?
You could do it, Dave.
Do we want to have a special meeting, like on a Thursday for an hour or so? Or not on a Thursday, on the day other than the council meeting?
Maybe you could give them, the twenty-seventh, you get down to the two firing police chief. How about the meeting after that, maybe?
You mean before, before a work session?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. All right, good.
Does that work for everybody?
Great.
Is there any other new business?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I want to bring up a couple of things. First of all, I received some letters that were transmitted to me from an attorney representing a resident in the city asking for the mailing list of the Macedonia Messenger. And they said that this was under the Freedom of Information Act. And I'm opposed to this because the people whose names are on the Macedonia Messenger's mailing list, these are people who want their email addresses held confidential by the city and who only want to receive the Macedonia Messenger so they can be kept apprised of city events. I don't know why these people or this particular resident wants this mailing list, except that they have some purpose in mind. And I just feel that for the city to release this mailing list based on a request under the Freedom of Information Act, that it would be a violation of the privacy of many of our citizens in Macedonia. And once this mailing list would be released, it could be used by marketers, spammers, or for people whose purposes perhaps are really not that commensurate with the aims and goals of, of this city, which is just to inform residents of what's taking place in this community. And lately, this city has had a number of Freedom of Information requests. And what it's done is it's burdened this city financially. It's taken time away from our department heads who've had to comply with these. And for whatever purpose these Freedom of Information requests are being made, I have yet to see any good tangible result come of it. I'd like to, but I have yet to see any good tangible result. And I think that if these requests continue, and they are frivolous, I, I would like to see the city take some action against those and make these persons accountable for the cost that they have caused this community. That's number one. Number two, I want to point out one other thing, too. I have worked with Mike Ladd for years. And again, it appeared, as usual, there was an anonymous claim made that somehow Mr. Ladd was acting improperly. Now, Mr. Ladd is a good man, has a family, home, children, works hard. And he's really done a good job with our building department. And he was accused of wrongdoing. And that claim turned out to be false. And that claim was turned over to the auditor. And the auditor investigated it. And again, it was an anonymous claim. And the city got involved in the investigation, as well as, I believe, Cogga County and some other entities. And we are going to get a huge bill from the auditors who conducted this claim because this city is going to be billed for this. What I'm asking here for is this. Number one, I hate anonymous claims or accusations because they're cowardly and they're just made to damage people like Mr. Ladd, who was a good man. A good man. I mean, we're talking about your reputation and the way that you make a living. And I want to find out who did this. I want to find out and hold someone accountable for what they did because I believe that because of the damage that has been caused, caused to this community financially, that this person should be found out and should be made to pay for this false claim. This could have easily been handled by bringing it to the attention of the executive, the mayor in our city. He could have turned it over to the law department. And from what I know now, this could have been resolved within a matter of a ten, fifteen-minute discussion. Instead, this is going to cost us thousands of dollars, maybe tens of thousands of dollars to resolve. But I want to know who reported this to the audit committee. I understand that the results of the audit are going to be released in a couple of weeks. That's why I had requested an executive session tonight. But I would like the director of personnel to produce a report because I understand that she was involved in this and explain how this whole thing came about so there's an understanding of how this took place in our community or our city. Because if it was internal or external, I really think we need to know who's responsible for this because we need to hold them accountable. And these types of accusations within the last few months have picked up from a group of people who don't seem to be satisfied with the way things are going in this city. I guess widening Route eighty-two, putting a bridge over Highland Road, having a great rec center, finding a new tenant for two-club golf, and stabilizing the finances of this city, for some reason, that's not enough for them. They have to poke around, and they have to attempt to damage the reputation of good men like Mr. Ladd. I myself, somebody sent an anonymous letter about me. And guess what, Mr. Ladd? The same result. In fact, they concluded that the whole thing was frivolous, and they dismissed it. And I, I do want to point out to people that these Freedom of Information requests, while this law was intended to make sure that government doesn't operate in secrecy and that all citizens have an opportunity to review what their government is doing and what pertinent documents, it is not a statute that is made to be abused. It is not a statute that is for the destruction of a person's reputation. And for that reason, I, I really think that this council needs to follow up on this issue, find out who was involved here, and hold that person accountable and make them pay for the monies that they have cost the city. Because it's going to be considerable, and I think we're going to be surprised. And I realize that this is an administrative area, but at the same time, when it diminishes the council's ability to budget, to have monies available to do things that are important in this community, then I think council needs to get involved. Because, quite frankly, these Freedom of Information requests, this is the reason why we can't do a lot of the programs or expand a lot of the programs in our community, like senior snowplowing, why we can't get better equipment for the rec center. Because people have motives, which in my opinion, are not in the best interests of the city, but they would rather do it because it's in their best interest and be darned with the city.
Ken, thank you. As a follow-up, Tom, did we give that list of the people getting the messenger to anybody else? Maybe a former mayor, maybe a resident of another town?
I don't know anything about that.
Well, I'll refresh your memory. The answer's yes.
You asked me. I don't remember anything about that. With regards to the most recent ruling that was made by the law department, it was based upon new case law that existed addressing this particular subject matter. Email messenger lists are not public record. To release them would be a violation of the privacy of those individuals and invite every bad, negative thing that Mr. Martin had indicated. I'm not going to debate this subject with you. It's the law. You paid the law department to provide you with the most current and updated version of the law, and that was done in this case.
So something happened between the time we gave it and that? Okay, what happened? What, what law came down from some authority?
Did you read the memo?
No.
Read the memo.
Okay, do you have one with you?
Make public record.
Because I think the law department caused this. I think the law department caused this event and should reimburse the city. So suddenly, since the time that the mayor got it and the resident in another town, the law has changed. I would have loved to hear about that law being changed. I'm going to look through my big, black box of all the stuff I got. Right here, I'm going to look through there and see if I got my.
I know this is funny to you. It's funny to the people out here who take good people's names.
The truth is not funny.
The truth is not funny sometimes. And I've told you the truth. The truth is that the case law has changed, and the opinion that we've given the city on this matter is the correct opinion.
But your opinion the first time was the wrong opinion? Because it sure looks like it.
Mr. President, if we wanted to get into discussion about the law, how the law evolves, how it's changed,
This is called where we bail.
We could go on forever, but I don't think that in this forum, that's the type of discussion that needs to take place.
I believe what you're saying is simply this. Between the time, the first time of it being given out to the person, and then there was case law that indicated that that cannot be given out. Is that correct?
Correct.
So then that's the answer to your question.
So the unfairity that we have now is based on new law?
Case law, meaning it happened, it's been ruled on. The law generally, and I'm not an expert, relies on prior judgments, which is case law. Case law indicates that you're going to forward because it sets a precedent.
On the one hand, you want to collect for our costs, but on the other hand, our law department costs us.
Yes and yes.
I can only wonder. I can only wonder if the people working for us are really doing that.
I'll keep that in mind.
Thank you.
If I might, Ken, I'd like to help you a little bit with this. There, there was a time that John Golden and myself followed up with the auditor. And I think we have a little bit of a problem because the auditor that's here and the head of the audit, people working here is Kate. She did not get the request. The request went to their main office.
Really?
Yeah. And then the main office sent that request back to this auditor here. So when John and I tried to follow up, you know, is there a way to find out who would be doing this? Because actually, Mr. Ladd's rights were violated, as you said. I don't know if we can do that because it went to the main auditor. The auditor's report that we get, alls it will say is Mr. Ladd is innocent. This did not take place. As far as our human resources, in defense of Dee, she is obliged to follow up on everything or anything relating to any indiscretions, whether they be true or not. That's her job. So at all times, Dee and all the people within this community that we call our City Hall are under my direction. are under my direction. If something's going on, I want you to find out about it. I don't care who it is or when it is. Well, in this particular case, that happened to be Mr. Lad, and it was proved false. In previous cases, I've terminated people because of the results of her doing what I say. This is taxpayers' money. Dee, why not if it's true or not? So that's my orders. I'm sorry, but Mike, it's not about you, it's not about anybody. It's, in general, that the H.R. person is to defend or investigate. And that's what happened.
Well, what I'd like is a report to see how this happened. And if she could provide us one.
Sure.
I'd really like to have that report, because, you know, we have, we have a group of people in the city right now who are just, they're throwing out accusations, and they're throwing out innuendo. And Mr. Lad, when I talked to you and I heard your story, it, it just measured very, very closely to mine. And you're not in as good a position, perhaps, as I am, to defend oneself. And I, I just think that whoever is responsible for this should be held accountable, and they should pay the cost of this. And that's my point here.
Yes. And, and it's very well-taken, because, believe me, it puts a tremendous burden on the city. It's a right given to people by the Constitution of the United States. However, sometimes rights are abused and create, actually, we had three records requests going on at the same time, and my administrative assistant is in charge of records, and Mrs. Arceisi was kind enough to come up and help her try and go through the mass amount of paperwork that was generated.
Mr. Mayor. I got, I got phone calls from seven different people who are outraged that their name, which was on the Macedonia messenger list, is going to be turned over to some unidentified, unnamed individual, and that that individual could do with that list what they want. But Ken, because it is an, it is an.
Were the justice alarm that was given out?
Pardon?
Were the justice alarm, where the list of the Macedonia messenger people was given to the former mayor and a resident from Sagamore Hills? Just because they asked for it, they got it.
Yeah, there were people who were upset about that, because a couple of them complained. But the thing is, no, what happened was, I read the memo that was provided by Mr. Deemer, and it pointed out that that is not a public record. And the other thing is.
But he ruled that it was previous to that.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, that's, that's what he did.
I don't, I don't, I don't remember the Law Department ruling that at all.
Well, it wasn't a ruling, but on the advice, you know.
Because you got to know.
Here's.
You wouldn't want to do it again.
Here's the thing. If I am allowing you to hit me in the face with the shovel, the first time, I don't know what the results are going to be. If I let you do it again, shame on me. The first time that information was given out, it was at my order. I am the executive of this city, and I was under the impression that every single thing in this city was public record.
But when you got down for it.
And I did not check with the Law Department. I got nailed.
Right.
Because that was a, you know, I didn't realize it when you're mayor, and you're on the phone, and you're doing all these things. And once you realize how many decisions I have to make just like that in a day, I didn't make the right decision. My Law Department said, at that time, "It's not as bad as you think, Mayor, because there's no case law saying you can't do that." Since that time, there is. So it's over. I, I, I did what I thought was right, and it wasn't a bad thing at that time. But it wasn't a good thing either. So shame on me if I do it twice.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
I have a question for the Legal Department. So the mayor described, and it's an indiscretion described to H.R., which would mean that that person was not anonymous. Will public records provide who that person is and who started this process?
Anonymous means anonymous.
Yeah.
Well, if someone walks into that office and says indiscretion, or describes something that.
If there's a document that records the business of the city, and that exists, it's a public record. For the most part, unless it's a term exemption. So if there's a document that records an official complaint that was, it has a name on it, and it's not anonymous, yes, that would be a public record.
All right, well, I'm going to, I'm going to publicly ask for a public records request, tracing this back to whoever had started this process, so that I can do an investigation of my own into what happened.
They can't trace it, remember? They tried to trace me on my email.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, it's untraceable. That's what they told us, remember?
I'd like to make that request.
Well, just so that you're aware, there was a police investigation made, and we can make that available to you?
I would like everything to do with it.
Okay.
And Mr. Lad and the situation. And by the way, Mr. Lad, I applaud your efforts. I mean, people forget that this gentleman got us almost $20 million for our Stoneman improvements. We should be handing you a plaque, not anyone persecuting you.
Thank you.
Right, and, and I agree with you. This is, this is, can't be about that kind of thing. We, I mean, I'm the first one who, actually, all along, the mayor was aware of the situation all along, from the start, from the beginning. I was involved. That's the way it should be. And there were no indiscretions that I could see. A records request is made. We got to remember that we can't point a finger at another employee. That's kind of what I sense happening. I mean, is that what we're doing? That an employee did it? Because if that's what it is, that's, that's not right. Especially if it's an employee whose job is to find out if the information and the request has any merit. And we talk about saving money. I can't tell you how much that other employee has saved us in hospitalization costs and legal matters, and I defer to Mr. Hanselak to verify that, because she's all over people if they're doing something wrong, and if they're not, she still checks them out. So am I sensing that? I don't want council to think that another employee is doing something illegal, and looking after somebody with any intent of wrongdoing, she's only doing her job.
Does that make sense?
I, I guess if we get more into personnel, maybe Mr. Hanselak can help me out. If it's going to get more into personnel issues, you might want to adjourn to an executive session.
Why don't we wait till the audit report comes out?
And I'm, yeah, we have an incomplete, yeah, we have incomplete information, so let's, let's do that.
Can I make a motion to adjourn, then?
You can.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you for coming.
Hey, thank you.